Good evening, everyone. August 4th, 2021 conference board meeting is now called to order. This meeting of Essex County Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order, and due to COVID-19 outbreak and the being in compliance with the governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view the meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the commissioner's website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, let's please pause for a moment of silence for all of those who have been affected and have lost loved ones and those who have lost their lives due to COVID, and be mindful that it's not over. So please protect yourself. A moment of silence. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Yes, Mr. President. We have one, the May 26, 2021 conference board meeting.
Commissioner, any questions, comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Mercado to approve the transcripts. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares, absent. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move. Through you, Mr. President. I've been hearing some noises, background noises. Just to remind people to please make sure you're on mute if you're not speaking.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference slash board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public have an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you're calling in, you'll be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the caller so they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you'll have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our public information officer, you can begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have multiple callers waiting to speak. The first caller is Suzanne Atman. Ms. Atman, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. Before speaking, you may begin.
Hi, Suzanne Atman. I'm urging you to vote no on the deer calling resolution number 25. There's a clear need to immediately reassess this policy. A no vote from you means that killing is not the priority, but that looking at justifiable science and forward-thinking ideas is your priority. A no means you are not willing to accept the many incorrect assumptions, erroneous claims, and false conclusions in the deer calling permit application. A no means that despite pressure to call, you do not want to repeat the same mistakes year after year. The county is fortunate to have a national expert, Dr. Ash Smith, Yale School of the Environment, willing to provide his opinions and advice. In his review of the annual applications emailed to you, he writes, quote, "We conclude that using the data in the existing deer management application reports to support further deer management is not scientifically defensible." He concludes that 10 deer per square mile that the program recommends is not a scientifically sound goal to set. He explains the number as a misrepresentation of the scientific literature, leading to leading to an overestimation. We cannot misrepresent when it comes to killing animals and spending taxpayer dollars. These numbers need to be reevaluated and reflect honest and more universally accepted numbers. Dr. Smith concludes that the accuracy of the spotlight and drone counting is questionable, leading to overestimations. Just look at the drone's 21 deer per square mile estimation in South Mountain. Even if that number were accurate, it falls well within the range of what most ecologists say is acceptable. The applications claimed, such as the reservation forests are not regenerating, are not scientifically proven. Dr. Smith writes, "The studies are outdated and follow-up measurement over the decade has been incomplete. Other causes of impairment like soil health due to invasive worms that live in the reservation are not even factored in." These are just a few of the reasons that calling is not justified. The annotated version of the deer application emailed to you points out the many other inconsistencies and false claims. If we flip the question from how many deer do we have to kill this year to how can we minimize conflict without killing deer, many other sensible options will appear, like fertility control, which the BOS cyber institute concluded reduced deer population by 45% over four years. Let's use the $100,000 to pilot that instead. The county does an excellent job on many things. This is an area where you are not putting Essex County first and wasting taxpayer dollars. I urge you to vote no. Give yourself and residents time to reassess. Listen to Dr. Smith and get a forward-thinking dialogue going. Now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doreen Frega. Ms. Frega, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Doreen Frega. I would also like to address the deer management program, and I urge you to vote no on the deer management program application number 25. Essex County has been killing the deer at the expense of the taxpayer of over $1 million since 2008. Essex County and the county executive and the Board of Commissioners, they should reassess their current deer management plan and use more of a non-lethal humane method in the 21st century instead of killing. That does nothing but cause cruel and inhumane treatment to the deer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sally Malanga. Ms. Malanga, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Sally Malanga. Seeing the signs that say deer hunt, reservation is closed every year, is chilling and demoralizing. The reservation belongs to all of us. It should not be closed for the purpose of killing. Apparently, there's new scientific evidence that was mentioned by the first caller, Suzanne Atman, that shows that the deer are not a culprit and whatever this commission or the county administrators think may or may not be happening in the reservation, which is debatable in itself. Exactly what is happening in the reservation? Could it be that climate change is possibly the biggest problem that we face and not the deer? And as far as deer car accidents, in fact, insurance companies have done studies that show during hunting season, there are more deer car accidents than at other times of the year. Has this been taken into account? I'm asking this commission to rethink this old-fashioned, out-of-date, obsolete deer call that aligns the county with gun manufacturers and the NRA, organizations who thrive on fear, not science. We have to allow native species to exist and thrive in their native habitat. I urge you to rethink this costly and ineffective program that has a very poor influence on our population in Essex County. And I hope that you will take action and revolutionize this program this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Nagelhout. Ms. Nagelhout, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Okay, Kim Nagelhout.
You may begin.
Okay.
Ms. Nagelhout, you may begin. You're on.
...program application. The Essex County Executive and Board of Commissioners need to establish an immediate moratorium and reassess the deer issue in a much more inclusive and open-minded way. Using the same approach for over a decade isn't working and will never work. Hunting stimulates still fertility. More food and resources are available for remaining deer, which can cause mothers to have more fun than normal. Non-lethal humane solutions, including sterilization, will help keep deer placeholders in these areas. Deer sterilization programs are working in many places, including New York and Ohio. However, our state wildlife officials won't approve it yet. Would you support pushing fishing game to approve a sterilization program? Many might not be aware, but overabundance is not a scientific word. It does not indicate an overpopulation of deer. The term is used by hunters, as well as state wildlife management agencies, in an effort to convince the public that deer must be hunted, even though they are not biologically overpopulated. Research has absolved whitetail deer of any significant role in the transmission of Lyme disease. These sources include Cary Institute's tick project, Harvard School of Public Health, and the Pennsylvania Game Commission. Risk of exposure to Lyme disease is correlated with abundance of acorns, mice, and chipmunks. The reality is our forests are affected by many things, including forest fragmentation, weather extremes, and overdevelopment. The most dangerous, according to the state DEP, are insects and diseases that are not native to the state. Also, certain plant species are shaded out as trees mature and the forest canopy closes. We must keep in mind that wild animals live in urbanized areas and flourish due to their ability to adapt, but also because of the food and denning, nesting, sheltering opportunities humans provide. Tolerance is needed when figuring out the best non-lethal solution for deer conflict, whether it's repellents, getting more deer-resistant plants, or installing fencing around plants and trees. There are many positives about deer. Deer fill an important role as brush cutters in the environment. They also reduce undergrowth that provides tinder for wildfires. Their droppings enrich the soil. They periodically mow down the volunteer grasses.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Nagelhout.
Deer are loving creatures and teach compassion to children of all ages. Wildlife crossings are needed statewide in New Jersey. Wildlife crossings were recently approved in California. Several more states, including Colorado, Utah, Washington, Nevada, and Florida, have found success in a reduction in animal vehicle collisions. Deer are truly gentle souls of the forest, fellow sentient beings who deserve our respect and compassion. Changing human behavior and human
Your time is over, Ms. Nagelhout. Your time is over. Pop up. All right. Thank you. As a reminder for all of the speakers, please, you cannot have the meeting playing on any secondary devices. You cannot listen to the meeting and make comments at the same time. So please just make sure nothing is on within earshot that's playing the meeting. The next speaker is Catherine Outlaw. Ms. Outlaw, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
My name is Catherine Outlaw, and I am also speaking about the deer management program application. And I urge you to please vote no on this application. Using the same approach for over a decade isn't working, and it will likely never work. It's time to revisit the issue and use humane methods. And I urge you to please reconsider a new approach to deer management. That's it.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ms. Janet London. Ms. London, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
My name is Janet London. I think we all know, in this complicated world that we're in, that killing is never really a good answer. And we don't want to be using old thought and old technology to manage a problem when we have so much more available to us now from the advances in science. And so why do we want New Jersey to be doing something, you know, that other people have found better answers for? And, you know, we're enough of a laughing stock oftentimes that we don't need to use an old-fashioned method to try to solve a current problem when there's better solutions available. So please vote no, and let's bring New Jersey up to speed with modern technology and ways of handling a problem like this, and let's stop killing, which is never a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. My mistake. We have one more speaker waiting to speak. The next speaker is Mark Nagelhout. Mr. Nagelhout, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Okay, Mark Nagelhout. Hope everyone's doing well. Speaking tonight on the deer hunt. So I'm calling in today to explain some of the cruel realities of the hunting industry. Some of this Sally had already touched on, just to follow up on her point. So included, what I'm going to talk about is how the gun and ammo and hunting industries are biased and are embedded together. Their goal is to sell more hunting licenses and sell more guns and ammo. So we need a lot less of this in our state and our country right now. As an example, I recently saw an article shared by the Sportsman's Alliance, who is part of this bias industry. And it was about a grizzly bear that had killed an elk calf. And the comment on their post was, well, this is nature, you know, either eat or be eaten. Well, that's not, that's not fair to say. That's intentionally simplified and misleading, actually. And there's a big difference between that, actual nature, and why we hunt animals. You know, that grizzly bear didn't go to Cabela's or to Buddy's Guns R' Us to buy a rifle to kill that elk calf. She didn't buy a hunting license. And plus, the grizzly didn't take a photo of herself holding up the dead calf's head. And she didn't go to the taxidermist to have that calf stuffed and turn it into furniture. So another point is, you know, killing deer is the cash cow of the industry here in New Jersey. They make the most money that way. And it's really never been about population control. All you need to do is Google the Garden State Deer Classic, and you'll see what hunting deer is all about. So just like the bear hunt, it's a recreational trophy hunt to help sell more licenses and weapons. So I ask you all today to please join the growing coalition of the compassionate who see through this ruse. Please push fishing game to promote more non-lethal solutions, including allowing sterilization. Now, another point that you might not be aware of are the negative impacts of baiting. Hunters use bait stations in South Mountain and Hilltop. Baiting will bring deer and other animals together in a small area. And this can create
Thirty seconds, Ms. Nagelhout.
Create overbrowsing of vegetation in this area, as well as spreading of diseases and predation on smaller animals, including ground nesting birds. It can also increase the fertility of the does who aren't killed. Baiting isn't allowed in a significant portion of places in the United States, including our neighboring New York and most of Pennsylvania. So I ask you all, please govern with your hearts and minds. Please vote no to deer hunting in Essex County. Reassess what you're doing there. And you can implement a non-lethal conflict and impact management plan for the entire county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any more callers waiting to speak.
Thank you, Charlo Malumba. Mr. President, we also have no written correspondence or emails regarding a public comment for the first public comment session on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. As is our practice, we will get back to you in writing and all your concerns are duly noted. So thank you, callers, for calling in. Okay, Madam Clerk. Do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have one ordinance on introduction and first reading. The ordinance is naming the playground in Essex County Cedar Grove Park as the Essex County Thomas J. Tucci Senior Playground in honor of the late Thomas J. Tucci Senior.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Madam Clerk said and pretty much explained, this ordinance is naming the playground in the Cedar Grove Park after Mr. Tucci, who spent 25 years as our building superintendent at the police academy and made numerous contributions to the Essex County community, and we're happy to recommend to the board to name the playground in his honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Anyamwo, any questions?
None, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Johnson to introduce ordinance number one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll move to resolutions number one through six. The Addis Star of 58, which are all budget insertions, and please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one is a budget insertion for the lie heat program, which provides energy assistance to residents of Essex County. This is going to offset some of our administrative costs, an amount of $52,288. Item two is similar for a similar group of folks, slightly higher incomes. Again, this offsets part of our cost, and that's the amount of $34,858, and that's a universal service fund. Item three from the Department of Law and Public Safety is for the sexual assault response team. This provides for salaries for nurse examiners and those associated with the Office of the Prosecutor for victims of sexual assault. There's an in-kind match of $30,195. This budget assertion is the amount of $120,780. Item four, Division of Criminal Justice, again, Office of the Prosecutor, $90,476.19. These are funds used to grant for opioid-dependent and subject to criminal arrest and treatment in lieu of incarceration. We've done this program in the past. And this helps to offset some of our costs, the amount of, again, $90,476.19. Number five is an insertion from the Department of Community Affairs for the West Side Community Park Community Center, the amount of $4 million. We're going to be very excited about this project. We're going to be upgrading the current gym and demolishing and rebuilding the community center at West Side Park. Item six is an insertion of $4 million, again, from the Department of Community Affairs for the first key building at Hendrick's Field. And finally, item 58 is a budget assertion, an amount of $2,589,442.50. It's for the early voting efforts and a part of our different offices, Board of Elections, Office in particular, to provide for voting machines for 10 early voting sites, polling books, and training for the elections coming up this year. There's no county match, and again, the amount is $2,589,442.50.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Anyamwo, any questions or comments?
None, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
With regard to resolution five and six, these amounts are not necessarily a recurring type of grant, right? What might, at least five is legislative grant. So this is specific just to this, this project, both five and six. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. President. That is correct.
So these are not recurring type of grants that we see from year to year. Just, this is specific to this. These are something specific to the project's name, and that's it. It's not
That is correct. That's correct.
Thank you very much. Whoever got it, it's a lot of money. $8 million is a Whoever got it, it's, it's a lot of money. Eight million dollars is, uh, is very impressive.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Commissioner Sebel?
Are all of these, um, money coming from the state except for number three? Is that correct? Number three is an in-kind?
Yeah, all, all of them are coming from the state. There is an in, for number three, Commissioner, there is an in-kind match for us that's required, thirty thousand, one hundred and, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. But it's a grant that requires us to do a match.
Okay, but none of the, we don't have to match on any of the others?
Uh, that's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebel. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Gill to take resolutions one through six and fifty-eight as one. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number seven, which is from the Office of the County Exec. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Anthony Pope has been named the Grand Marshal of twenty-twenty-one Nutley-Bellville, Columbus State Parade. And this resolution will, uh, uh, ceremoniously naming Franklin Avenue in Nutley and Belleville as Anthony Pope Boulevard in, in that, in that honor. Um, and Mr. Pope has worked for the Newark PD, this is County Prosecutor's Office, um, and has been, again, a great contributor to the County of Essex. And we're happy to make this recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Anyan Wu?
No, Jackson.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number eight, which is from the Office of Small Business Development. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Director Burnett is here to address this item.
Good evening, Commissioner Keisha Burnett, Director of Small Business Development and Affirmative Action. The Office of the County Exec, Office of Small Business Development, Professional Services Agreement to Provide Essex County Disparity Study, awarded, uh, hopefully awarded to NGT of America Consulting LLC, twelve-month contract, amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And the vendor is on the phone if you have questions.
Yes, let's get the, uh, vendor on. Introduce himself.
Good evening.
Name for the record affiliation. And I'll tell us a little bit about what your company does, who you are, and what you plan to do here.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Andreas Burnall. I am a director within our disparity study practice area of NGT, NGT of America Consulting. Um, a little bit about who we are. We have been in business now for forty-seven years, handling all sorts of, um, public sector consulting projects, anywhere from municipalities to Department of Transportation, higher education, anything that touches the public sector. NGT Consulting has done in our forty-seven years. We have now done projects in all fifty states, um, including New Jersey. Uh, particularly for this, um, project, we are hoping to do the disparity study for Essex County. NGT has been doing these types of projects since they first, um, uh, came on the, in the industry back in nineteen eighty-nine. We did the first, uh, project for the city of Tallahassee, Florida. And that is, um, and back in nineteen eighty-nine, that is when the first disparity study, um, was conducted. City of Richmond versus, uh, Croson was the landmark Supreme Court case that started this whole industry. And NGT has been doing it ever since. To date, we've done over two hundred, uh, disparity studies. We've done them all across the nation. And our hope is that for the, um, County of Essex, we will do the exact same thing, um, where we will be looking at the economic equity of the community vendors in hopes to be able to provide the community, the county's community, uh, specifically their small business vendors, their minority vendors, their women-owned business vendors, uh, more equitable opportunities to do business with the county. And then now we're available for any questions that the commission may have.
Uh, thank you. I want to recognize Commissioner Cooper is here with us. Uh, Mr. Anyan Wu, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, Mister, and I apologize, Sid, Burn, Burnell, was it?
Yes, sir, Burnall. Yes, sir.
Burnell, yeah, you mentioned that, uh, you know, since the Croson decision, your company, uh, NGT has done over two hundred disparities. I, I know Essex County was, you know, the first, uh, as far as, like, uh, county in New Jersey to commission a disparity study. Um, have you worked with any other counties in New Jersey?
Uh, we actually did back in two thousand and three. We did the, the state of New Jersey's, or it might have been two thousand and four, but I, but, you know, but we worked on it in two thousand and, and three, was the state of New Jersey's disparity study.
Okay, you guys did the state of New Jersey disparity?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right, good. And that was two thousand and four?
I believe that's when, it was either two thousand and four and, or two thousand and five, when the actual study was delivered, uh, to the state.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That, that was, that's it.
Mr. McInerney?
Yes, I was wondering if, uh, the gentleman had, uh, looked at the prior disparity study done some years ago by the county. If I'm not mistaken, I, I think it was done by the University of Minnesota or something like that. Is, was that something you were able to look at?
We have looked at it, but, um, to be a hundred percent honest with the commission, our methodology is, is, is definitely more of the date and a little bit different. We feel that it's a much more accurate representation. Um, but we will, you know, that will be, of course, a basis, uh, for, for any of the learnings that we do.
One of, one of the issues I had was in counting, you know, the amount of contracts that went to, uh, small business, minority-owned businesses. Um, if somebody was a minority-owned business and a small business, those, those contracts were literally counted twice in our last, um, in the disparities that, in our, in our disparity study the last time. And as we move forward to try to gauge what was happening in the county and how we were making progress, that duplication was something that I brought up on many occasions when the quarterly reports used to come before the Board of Commissioners. Have, have you seen that in anything you've looked at at Essex County? And is that a practice that you commonly see, or, or is that something you would not do? Do you count each?
And, and sir, that is, and to answer your question, sir, that, that is one of the reasons why I feel that our methodology is a little bit more accurate and is different from the past study, is that NGT does not do any of that duplication of FDE or MBE. The way that we look at our analysis is based on the, uh, United States Census definition of, of the ethnicity, gender categories. So we look at it at a granular level based on the procurement categories. Um, but we look at it, African-American firms, Native American firms, Asian-American firms, Hispanic-American firms, Asian-American firms, and then non-minority women, female firms, and then non-minority, uh, firms, so that we can compare the whole, um, opportunities that are available. Because we feel that small businesses or minority businesses tend to be very similar. So there, we do not do any type of duplication the way that you are referring to.
Okay. So you've, you've, you actually expand the categories in order to avoid that? So you're.
Yes, sir. And the reason we.
Three major ones. It, it is broken down further, more finite, to, to recognize who specifically, what groups are specific, what minority groups are specifically getting contracts.
Correct, sir. Yes, sir.
But have you heard that before, where, where, where things have been duplicated? If you're using those more broad.
Uh, we, we have seen that, but that is not the, the methodology that we, we adhere to, just to prevent any kind of confusion of, of that duplication.
Okay, well, that's, that was a big concern of mine. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Through you, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Anyan Wu?
Yeah, just a point of clarification for, uh, I wanted to know from Mr. Um, McInerney, is it that, uh, the methodology that Minnesota used, um, double counted? Or was it in the presentation in the county's, uh, Small Business Office that presented the dup, uh, the duplication of, uh, a little double counter for minorities and small businesses?
Well, I, I think that the county followed what was done in disparity study. But I know for a fact that when, when, uh, they came before the Board of Freeholders, I, I, at least the first dozen times, I put on the record that it was a duplication of awarding the contracts. So you actually had, if you had ten million dollars worth of contracts, give it out and any one week, you could literally come back and say that twenty million was given out. You know, actually, ten million was, was the actual number. And those were in the quarterly reports that the, the board received. And then after a while, uh, the quarterly reports continued to do that. And I just stopped making criticism of it because it was well-established that I had on the record many times before. And that's.
Yeah, definitely.
That's my concern, that's my concern going forward with this new, uh, vendor.
Right, I, you know, because I did read the disparity report. I, I, I agree with you. And I, I definitely recall you put it on the record, that, uh, the double counting from, uh, the quarterly reports. But I'm not necessarily sure that that came from, uh, the Minnesota disparity study. Okay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Anyan Wu. And, uh, Commissioners, any, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. This is Commissioner Cooper.
Commissioner Cooper, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so excited to see the administration moving forward with doing an updated disparity study. I do have a couple of questions for the vendor. My first question is, will your process involve a review of the prior study so that we can get accomplishments? Or, you know, some new, yeah, some new accomplishments based upon the progress that happened between the last study and present date?
Uh, to answer your question, ma'am, yes, we will do that. Um, of course, we work with the project director from the county's point of view to understand what it actually means that we would want to look at. Um, but we have done that in many of our different studies that are, that are multi-generational studies. But we will definitely keep that in mind, and we will do that. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, next question is, what is the timeline for conducting this, uh, study, this review? How long do you envision that it will take?
Um, as I think it was kind, indicated a little bit ago, the contract is for twelve months. So our timeline from the, from the day that we kick off the process is a twelve-month period.
And when is your anticipated kickoff? Do you know that yet?
Uh, once we have approval from the commission, we will work with the county. But as soon as possible, we are available to start as soon as, as soon as possible.
So then I'm gonna, so that question I'll present to Mr. Jackson. Um, do we know a timeline for when this will get started?
Uh, through you, Mr. President. We're looking to start September one.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, going back to the vendor, my next question is, in your prior studies that you conducted for other locations, did you include recommendations on things and ways that the client, things that the client can introduce to help improve the, um, some gaps or barriers that you may have, that you may have identified?
Um, are you talking, ma'am, are you talking about data-wise? Um, or are you just talking about just gaps in, in the program?
Both. So when you look at your studies, you're going to see, you know, the, the percentages are the percentages, right? And then do you recommend ways, things that your client, things, program services that they can implement to improve their numbers?
Yes, ma'am. There's many different, you know, it's all dependent, of course, on the various different aspects of the study that, that we, we analyze. So for example, you know, based on utilization, depending on the numbers, based on the various different categories, we may make different, uh, procedural programmatic recommendations to hopefully improve some of these sectors. Um, if we hear, once we do our anecdotal activities, um, one of the things that we like to really get from the, um, community, vendor community as a whole, is even their recommendations as well. And, you know, if it's warranted based on, on some of the data that we're finding from the procedures, from the programmatic procedures, we will make those recommendations, uh, on what we feel are improvements to the program. Then, of course, if we do see some outages, or we, we feel that there might be enhancement just to how the data is gathered, collected, um, any of those numbers, we may make recommendations. So like I said, in our, in the two hundred and plus studies that we've done, we've done various different recommendations on not only improving the economic equity of the vendors, but also improving the program and how it is administered by the county.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Well, I certainly would like to make one. I, I am encouraged by what I'm hearing from Mr. Burnell and NGT in terms of especially the breakdown, because, uh, Mr. McInerney is a hundred percent correct. A lot of times, we were getting duplicate information. They were counting folks twice. Uh, and the way you're talking about breaking it down, uh, in ethnicity and, you know, African-Americans, Latino-Americans, non-African-Americans, white women, that, that's going to be critical to, uh, how we move forward in terms of getting, uh, minorities and making sure there's more, uh, economic inclusion from the folks who get very little at this juncture. So, yeah, I'm very, uh, encouraged by your methodology. Uh, so I'm looking forward to this, so. Yeah, you definitely have my vote. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to approve resolution number eight. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Shannon? Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Yes. Com-
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
You have a bad connection.
A bad delay, yes.
Commissioner Bar- Vice President Palmaras?
Mars is absent. Yes, for me.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes. You are really having some technical difficulties, Madam Clerk. I think we have enough yeses to move Resolution Number Eight forward. So thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we're gonna move to Resolutions Nine and Ten, which are from the Office of the County Administrator. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. President, Mr. Director Tim Walker is gonna deal with these two items.
Good evening, Commissioner President Richardson and the rest of the Commissioner Board. Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management for the County of Essex, uh, seeking approval under Resolution Number Nine for the appointment of Connor Strong and Buckaloo Companies LLC to perform insurance broker services related to the county's corporate property and casualty insurance program. Uh, Connor Strong was one of four responding vendors, and they had both the highest average score and the highest aggregate score. As such, we are seeking approval for a three-year contract, a zero-dollar contract to the county. Any questions?
Please continue.
Okay, uh, for Resolution Number Ten, we are seeking the approval for the appointment of Connor Strong and Buckaloo to perform the county's insurance broker services related to our medical malpractice insurance program. They were the only responding and qualified vendor for this bid. As such, we seek to provide them with a three-year contract, again, a zero-dollar contract.
I think we also have Number Eleven.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, Director Jackie Jones will address Item Eleven.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, this is Jacqueline Jones, Director of Human Resources. I'm with the Department of Administration and Finance, Office of Human Resources. Contract award, we act for the contract award to Connor Strong and Buckle Company LLC to provide insurance broker services for employees and retiree health insurance benefits and voluntary benefits with a 36-month contract in the amount not to exceed $300,000. I also have representation from, uh, representatives from the company on the line as well, if you have questions for us.
Okay. Thank you, uh, all, uh, Mr. Aniu. Any questions or comments?
No questions, President.
McInerney?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Items Nine, Ten, or Eleven? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Mercado to take Resolutions Nine through Eleven as one roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Twelve through Fourteen, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Lombardi will address these items.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners, Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. Uh, number, item number twelve is our request for approval of the Essex County Program Year 2021 One-Year Action Plan to HUD. For the record, uh, we have been allocated community development block grant funds of $5,582,860. Uh, we have been allocated home investment funds of $1,249,089, and emergency solutions grant funds in the amount of $466,551. And what we have provided is a summary of our plan for the funds based on applications that were submitted to our office. We are proposing to fund various projects for municipalities throughout Essex County, as well as public service agencies, and, um, uh, also for the ESG funds of various shelters and whatnot throughout the county. Uh, you know, again, if you have any questions regarding the allocations, I can answer those. Basically, for, we are receiving a little bit more than we did last year, so that's a good thing, and we're looking forward to a very productive program year 2021.
Next.
Okay, item thirteen, we are looking to extend contracts for existing sub-receipients of community development block grant funds. Many of these projects have been completed, but the timing was off as far as processing the final vouchers, so we need some extra time. And then there's also some other projects that have started, but have not yet been completed, and we're looking to extend their contracts in order that we can finish these projects and disperse the previously awarded CDBG fund. And finally, item number fourteen, we are seeking to extend certain contracts of, uh, various agencies of the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. And that again, is, those monies are used to help folks who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. In some of the cases, again, it's just a timing issue of processing the final vouchers and reimbursing the agencies. In other cases, especially for homeless prevention, there has been some, some regulations out there now that slow the dispersment of those funds, but we expect all those funds to be expended, uh, within the next several months. Are there any questions on either of those three items?
Hold on, Mr. Aniu. Questions or comments?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commission, questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Hold on. Yeah, and Commissioner Cooper to take Resolutions Twelve through Fourteen as one roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Fifteen, which is from the Division of Youth Services. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Martinez will handle this item.
Yes. Good afternoon, President, Commissioner and Commissioners, my name is Jason Martinez, I'm the Administrator for the Division of Youth Services. Um, today, we are requesting the continuation of the Truity Alternative Program with the City of Newark Municipal Court from January 1 to December 31st in the amount of $72,868. Um, this program, it will provide services and informal sanctions to youth who has begun to engage in low-level delinquent behavior and efforts to prevent youth from continuing on a delinquent pathway. Is there, uh, any questions or comments that I need to answer?
Mr. Martinez, before we move forward, for what year? You didn't mention the year, is this for last year, is this for this year, is this for next year?
It is from January 1st, 2021, to 2021, to December 31st, 2021.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aniu.
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
All right, Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner? Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Sixteen, which is from the Department of Health and Rehabilitation, Division of Hospital Center. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. DelGaudio is gonna handle this item.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. President, this is Frank DelGaudio, Director of the Essex County Hospital Center. Uh, Resolution Sixteen is requesting your approval for a contract with ES Healthcare. Um, this is for psychiatric psychiatry placement services. Um, we're currently going through a national shortage of psychiatrists, and the hospital is down two psychiatrists right at the moment. Um, all of our internal interviewing and, uh, efforts to hire psychiatrists have, uh, come up empty, so we're recommending this, uh, contract for your review and approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Aniu, question?
No questions, Mr. President.
McInerney?
Yes, Frank, is this a nationwide or regional problem, or is something that just indigenous does?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, this is a national problem with the advent of the COVID pandemic. A lot of psychiatry services are being performed through a telemedicine format. A lot of the doctors don't want to work in an inpatient setting right now. Just as a comparison, Greystone Psychiatric, which is our closest state-run psychiatric hospital, is down eight psychiatrists right now.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
I have a question, I have a question.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question about this resolution. I just want to be sure I understand it correctly. It's going to be a vendor who will provide for the recruitment services? And who will that vendor be to provide for the psychiatric physician recruitment replacement services?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, um, this is where this firm, ES Healthcare, who's a national, um, search firm, placement firm, for executive and physician-type positions, uh, would provide candidates to the hospital through resumes, names of local providers for us to interview. Then it is up to us, the Essex County Hospital and County Administration, whether to move on the hiring of, um, candidates. And our, we're very specific on, uh, the qualifications. Obviously, licensed in the state of New Jersey, we prefer board certification, what have you. So the contract is just to have a firm that will do a search for us, um, you know, other people who may relocate to the area or what have you, and then present the candidates for our approval.
There's no price listed in terms of what will be paid for this vendor to recruit physicians?
Yeah, through you, uh, Mr. President, the price is $32,000 per placement after a 60-day, um, retention period. So it's 32,000, that was the only, um, response we had. We issued an RFQ and then, uh, qualified the one vendor here, and then, um, we would like to, uh, move to a contract at the same time. Since we only had one, we had only one response to this RFQ and the urgency of this need.
Could you just repeat the price for me, please?
It's 32,000 per placement, so right now, we're looking for two psychiatrists to hire.
So it will be 32,000 for each psychiatrist you hire?
Correct.
Paid to this company?
Through you, Mr. President, that's correct.
And then what about the payment to the psychiatrist?
Uh, the psychiatrist then would become a staff member. They're not contracted, that individual would accept the position after we go through the interview, the credentialing, and we make a formal offer to the psychiatrist, they would become a county employee.
All right, and this company is, has proficiency in what it's doing?
Well, we'll find out. I do, I do have confidence in, um, the number of locations they have and the firms and hospitals that they have provide a top-level talent, too. So again, it is a national firm with offices all over the country.
Thanks so much for your information.
Thank you, Mr. DelGaudio. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take Resolution Number Sixteen. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Seventeen through Nineteen, and the added starters, Fifty-Nine and Sixty, which are from the Office of the County Clerk, Superintendent of Elections and Board of Elections, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, for Item Seventeen, we received a grant from the state of New Jersey, um, to assist with the new voting style with the new materials and the, uh, that's required, machine ballot box, and all those things, move those materials around. We received a grant from the state of New Jersey in the amount of $121,912 that will allow us to buy four vans for our election offices to provide those services. So it's about $30,500 per vehicle. Uh, Item Eighteen uh, is with the Office of the County Clerk, and it will, uh, this is a contract with the SOE Software Corporation to provide for election night reporting in the amount of $18,375. This will increase our access and transparency to election night data. Uh, it'll be geographic mapping, uh, also precinct reporting and voter center reporting, uh, so that on the website, the, uh, the level of detail and the amount of reporting will be much more robust. Uh, Item Nineteen, uh, is a change order, um, with the Office of the County Clerk for election materials, again, with the new mandates coming from the state, we're gonna need to print more, more- uh more materials, and um this uh will increase the, uh, this change order is the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, the original contract was one million, eight oh four, one sixty-eight, so the new contract is two million, one sixty-five, two dollars and forty-nine cents. Um, and item one T, um, I'm not sure, was that included on the list, Mr. President, or, or, or no?
No, we jumped to fifty-nine and sixty.
Okay, um, for fifty-nine and sixty, uh, we have Representative Patty Spangles on, on the line to uh, uh, direct, Superintendent Patty Spangles on the line to address those items.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, the Board of Commissioners. I am the acting superintendent for Essex County, and the two resolutions that you have in front of you, number, resolution fifty-nine and resolution sixty, is allowing us to be able to purchase the equipment that the county will need to implement early voting. I'm sure everyone has heard, um, there will be ten days of early voting, starting October twenty-third through October thirty-first, the Sunday before the general election. And in order to have, the reason we need equipment, I'm sure the question is going to come, but we just bought new uh voting machines last year. How the early voting is going to work is, right now presently, we each go to our own individual polling location for our warden district in our municipalities. Early voting is going to allow anyone from the county, from any town, to go into any early voting site and vote. And therefore, um, we do have Dominion and Knowing on the phone if they have to further comment on this, but our equipment that we presently have cannot hold the amount of material that would be needed because the ballots are going to be printed right there at the earling voting sites. So we need much more extensive equipment. We are also going to be using, which is mandated by the state, the entire state is going to have electronic poll books. There will be no more paper poll book, so that's also what, um, that is a resolution number sixty. So the two of them combined is going to allow the county to provide this early voting to our residents.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anyu, any questions or comments?
Um, none, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have a, I have a question.
Commissioner Siebel?
Thank you. Patty, uh, we're going to have early voting. Can you tell us where this early voting will take place?
I cannot, Commissioner Siebel. Um, the early voting locations comes from the Board of Elections, and they have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners there. So that would have come from the Board of Elections, Linda Van Esse.
All right, I understand, so we'll find out. Thanks.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Commissioner President.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Spango, as you would recall, we had a hearing related to the election, the primary, um, about a month or two ago. And looking at item number fifty-nine and item sixty, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Well, um, the items that you're procuring, will they address the concerns that was brought out during that hearing related to privacy screens? You know, how soon? Go ahead.
What we are providing for the um electronic, right now, the plan is that we have these, there, it's called a quad, where it's a, a voting booth, where there's four sections, where four voters can vote privately. We will be providing four quads per location for the ability of sixteen voters to be able to privately fill out their ballot.
Okay, so that's the setup for when people are physically manually filling out the, the bubbles, the circles for who they want to vote for. What about um the other concerns when, are these quads the same height as the ones that we used during the primary?
Yes.
And then what about the concerns when people went to put their sheet within the machine and felt like the workers were able to see who they were casting their votes for?
Well, I, I believe, like I said at our commissioner meeting when all of these questions came up, we do provide, I would say, minimum of twenty privacy sleeves inside each mach, voting machine that goes out. Now, that is up to the voter, if they want to utilize that privacy screen or not, where they take the privacy screen, they go to the privacy quad to fill out their ballot, they insert it into the folder, and just walk it over and insert it. No one has to see their ballot. But that's a choice of the voter if they want to use it or not. They are provided, and we are purchasing more for early voting.
So how many privacy screens will, will now be given out for each location? Do you have a figure yet? Because I know when I voted, I was not given a privacy screen.
Okay, I cannot, I ca, I can only tell you from my end, the privacy screens were sent inside the machines. I don't know if the poll worker didn't offer it to you, I don't know, I, I can't answer that question, but they were there. And in answer to your other question, we're still waiting to confirm how many early voting sites we will have, but trust me, there's going to be more than enough privacy sleeves. We will send more than we actually need.
Related to resolution number sixty, who is going to be responsible, also coming from um questions and concerns from our election hearing, who is going to um evaluate the electronic poll books to make sure that the vendor set them up accurately, that all of the eligible voters that's inside our paper books right now will fully trans over to the books? You know, we got concerns that people who are long-term voters, twenty-plus years, um, voting in the same districts, that when they went there, their names were removed. So the concern for me that I'm having right now is who's going to evaluate that all of the names translate um correctly?
Well, the, the state, the state has what we, we work off of a, a state voter registration site, and knowing the company that we're purchasing the poll books from manages that site for the state. So even without the e-poll books being in effect, we are constantly in touch with Knowing, you know, if there's a problem, if, you know, when we're reviewing our records. So your, my answer to you would be the state and Knowing will do that.
Is Knowing on the phone with us today?
They should be.
Mr. Jackson, do you know if Knowing's on the phone with us today?
Then Knowing are on.
Dominion and Knowing are on the phone.
Can we hear from some, Mr. President, can we hear from somebody from Knowing who can explain to us the process to ensure that we don't have some of those complaints that we've got from constituents during the primary?
Absolutely, let's uh, let's get them on. If they are here.
Dominion's up. Actually, the, the way it's, Dominion's up first, Mr. Mr. President, for, I guess for technical reasons, so if the representative from Dominion can go, then the representative from Knowing, please.
That's how we're going to do it, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper, do you need to hear from Dominion?
Um, no, I just, no, well, yeah, ask, let's ask Dominion the question about the privacy screens.
Go ahead, let's just get Q, uh, Dominion up.
Yes, I'm here, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, um?
Ho, ho, hold on, Commissioner. Who, who's speaking from Dominion?
This is Ron, Ron Rosania, the New Jersey Sales Rep for Dominion and a resident of Cedar Grove in Essex County.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cooper, what's your question?
Thank you, Ron. Can you tell us how many privacy screens are provided for each polling location?
Uh, that is typically a, a, a county uh decision. I believe that we have uh somewhere between twenty to twenty-five for Essex County, uh, if my memory is correct. Um, and part of the, the privacy screen, uh, like Superintendent Spango had mentioned earlier, um, I did a lot of the poll worker trainings, and I worked with the Board of Elections, um, Linda's office with the training, and that was one of the things that we emphasized for the primary was to, the first line of defense is our poll workers, obviously, to not only offer the privacy screen, obviously, this is a new way of voting in Essex County, so we, what we want to do is, we have to not only offer it, but we also have to demonstrate it. And that was something that I really tried to get the point across, uh, during a lot of the poll worker trainings that I was a part of. Um, it's a process, but we would definitely, there was enough at all the sites. It's really a matter of training the poll workers to get used to offering it, demonstrating it, and then eventually the, the, then that will make it a lot easier for the voter to understand how to use it.
Thank you.
But I believe there was, uh, there is and will be sufficient number of privacy sleeves. And they work just like Superintendent Spango had mentioned, uh, voter fills out their ballot, they place it into the privacy screen while they're in the privacy of the booth, and it uh conceals both the front and the back of their ballot. And also, it should be noted that this, this scanner, uh, the tabulator that the ballots are being tabulated in takes a digital image of the front and the back of every ballot that goes through, so there's no reason, uh, you could insert the ballot in any orientation that you want, whether it be face down, face up, and the privacy screen is meant to uh conceal both sides.
And I also believe, Ron, um, on your quote, you have twenty-five per, uh, twenty-five privacy sleeves per early vote, voting center, but we have quite a few that we got last year for the primary, so we're going to increase that even more.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dominion. Next contestant.
Tricia from Knowing, please.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Please introduce yourself, first name, last name, and your affiliation, tell us a little bit about. Commissioner Cooper has some specific questions.
Sure, um, so my name is Tricia Banstra, I am the Director of Sales at Knowing.
Uh, thank you. Um, can you tell us, what is your process for, from a compliance perspective, to evaluate if you all have downloaded all of the eligible voters per district within your electronic books? The question comes from during the last, um, our most recent primary, we've gotten to defeat that from constituents, that their names, and despite them living within their districts for an extended period of time and consistently voting, their names were not in the book. So the concern that I'm, that I have is, what do you do to evaluate that you brought over all of the eligible voters per district? Like, do you have a compliance evaluation component?
Yeah, so we actually will, will work directly with the state to get the most up-to-date voter registration file from them. Obviously, we are the company that um owns the voter registration system there, and then we also do, um, you know, L and A testing with the counties beforehand to make sure that they're getting the most up-to-date voter files when they're importing and exporting. So especially for this first election coming up, our regional manager and project manager in the state will be working directly with um the county and also with the state to make sure that all the files are up to date. Um, there's a lot of um check-your-work, check-your-work process also throughout the um importing process, too, to make sure that you are importing the files that are supposed to be there.
And how far out before the election does that happen? Is that like a thirty-day outlook, a week before the election? What's the timeline typically for that, to make sure that you got all, all the information and your check-your-work process?
So typically, um, you know, a county of this size is probably going to download their initial file about thirty days out, and then, um, with the connectivity piece and that internet piece, um, there will be um live updates to everything that's going on. So then, right after early voting, the most up-to-date file will come down that Sunday before. Um, and then, um, anything that comes in Monday from the mail ballot perspective will also be updated, too, with that internet connectivity piece.
Right. With these electronic books, will the polls be required to have Wi-Fi, or is it no?
Um, for early voting, yes.
So for early voting, yes, but during the November election itself, will Wi-Fi be required?
It's not required, but um it's, the state is allowing it.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, if I, Commissioner, if I can just say one more thing to you in reference to updating the uh registration, keep in mind that-
Please, please, Ms. Spango, please, please state your name for the record.
I'm, I'm sorry, Patty Spango, Acting Superintendent of Elections for Essex County. Um, I just wanted to bring something to the Commissioner's attention in reference to updating the voting records. Also, keep in mind that October twelfth is the last day to register to vote in the general election. So even if a voter sends in their registration form to our office, we are not allowed to register them. They miss the cutoff, so sometimes that's what happens as well. But anybody can register up till October twelfth.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President?
Commissioner Gill?
Thank you. Um, just through the um administration, um, will, will we be receiving any additional um communication or follow-up from the hearing uh itself outside of what was put on the record during the hearing?
Um, I would say, Mr. Commissioner Gill, that the responses that you're thinking, looking for will come from the election officials, um, because we're, you know, there's sort of a, um, what was the word I used? There's a wall between, a firewall really, between us and them in that regard. So I think the issues that were addressed would be more likely, or we should come back from those election officials, and we can follow up to make sure they, they have those answers, but um, I think, protocol wise, we'll follow up with them to get the answers to, to you.
Great, thank you. Um, just as a, a, and also through you, Mr. President, just as another additional follow-up question, and this is, um, uh, again, probably more for, um, not directed, uh, probably not for the superintendent before the Board of Elections in terms of this, this issue uh that Commissioner Cooper raised with, um, both with the uh pri, the, the sleeves and the partitions for privacy protection, really a, a two-point, uh, two points on that issue, um, that maybe when looking at our polling locations, it, it seemed to me during the primary, um, that, um, the, um, the privacy booths, as they're called, can be set up um in advance of people coming to the polling location itself, meaning that many of these, the, the way I thought that those were going to be set up was that when you had, for example, a polling location that had additional space, like many are in cafeterias, gyms, lunchrooms, that the part, that the, the privacy partitions would be set up. So as you're given the ballot, you then just go to one of those places to fill your, to fill your ballot out, not that you're necessarily handed one. So just a suggestion, probably, I guess, for the, you know, for, um, you know, for Linda. Uh, and secondly, on the ballot itself, being able to be processed both face up or face down, can the, can the machines be programmed for the ballot to only be processed face down?
That's a question for Dominion to answer. I'm sorry, Patty Spango.
Unfortunately, Commissioner, the, the way the system works, it's only one at a time, so I think Dominion hopped off, so now, uh, it's Knowing. Um, we can, we can get you that answer, Mr. Commissioner, sorry about that.
So, yeah, no, no problem. I mean, the, again, the, the, the reason I flagged that, you know, both for Dominion, and then I guess this would really, again, probably be a board, more than a superintendent question potentially. I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where the proper place for this goes, but clearly, one of the challenges, in addition to having, you know, uh, a, a couple of the machines, you know, mis, you know, misprogrammed or mislabeled, excuse me, um, you know, for use in a few of our uh districts, but also were the idea that, um, that, that the, if you were voting face up, if you were, if you were handing- if you were voting face up, if you were, if you were handing, board workers were accepting the ballots and scanning them face up, which means there, which means there, which means the individuals vote clearly viewable by the, by the board worker itself. So for consideration, I would suggest maybe that, maybe you should only be able to feed the machine with the ballot face down. Because really, board, poll workers were not supposed to be, excuse me, board workers were not supposed to be feeding those into the machine, but that was happening in quite a few different places. So I know that's a training issue, but, you know, when we have the amount of people that we're going to have in the general election, this is probably also something that needs to be given, I think, real serious consideration about maybe taking a different step to make sure that the privacy of the, of the ballot, the individual ballot is protected. I'll leave it there. And follow-up, thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'll follow up with those additional questions, you know, directly to you and to the appropriate election officials.
Thank you, Commissioner, but we will follow up with them to get back with you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take resolutions 17 through 19, 59, and 60 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number 20, which is from the County Board of Taxation, and we will read it into the record a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. This is a contract award to Revaluation Advisory Services LLC to provide consulting services to the tax board. The consultant is going to work with them to determine the equalization table, the tax rate, and calculate debits and credits to the assessment base. This is coming from trust funding, and it was one response, and the vendors from North Caldwell.
Mr. Aniu.
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
Did we award a similar contract to Samuel Klein for the same thing?
Samuel Klein, right, does their auditing, Mr. McInerney. This, this firm will help with the actual calculations of the tax rates, the tax tables, the debits and credits, the actual nuts and bolts of the actual calculation of the tax rates and so forth. So it's a different function altogether.
No, I'm aware they do the audit of it, but I thought there was a separate contract that Klein got to help exactly with the same thing, to do the equalization table, because up to, have they been doing this before, or who's been doing this before this firm?
I know Mr., Mr., I think it's not a favor. Mr. LaBrizzi has been involved with the, with working with the board of taxation for a number of years. I don't recall, this is another, a new contract, but I do not recall a contract with, with another firm, this work, to do this work. We can double-check into that, but I don't, I don't recall them. We'll look at it.
For George LaBrizzi in a long time. I'm not saying, maybe he was under the amount that I'd come to the board. So I haven't seen anything to George, but I, I could be wrong, Mr. Jackson, but we did do something relatively, well, not that long ago. If you could just check on that, I'd appreciate it. It may be different. I know Joe Ficcone did this service with regard to the equalization table and evaluations for me. So I've never, I've never seen this go out to anybody else. So again, I may stand corrected, but I, you know, I'd like to find that out, if I'm right or wrong. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yeah. Should we wait on our voting on this item until we get the results that Mr. McInerney wants to hear? Should we adjourn it till the next meeting? Frank, how do you feel about it?
Well, I mean, I, I could be wrong, so, but I, I, I know Joe Ficcone did it past, just me, it may mean he's not doing it anymore if I am right, and that this, this firm is doing it. Or maybe there was, this is something different from what showed that, but it, it reads the same way, at least on the resolution. Look, something-
Yeah, I was just gonna say too, I mean, we, we did a publicly clear, an open RRT process. We only have one response. So at some level, whether, whether or not they did it in the past or not, we can find that out, but for the purposes of this exercise, I don't think it's, I think it's moved.
All right. I understand this was the only-
Action. I think you go ahead with it. If we find out that Klein's not doing it anymore, then that's, that's just another, that's, that's fine. But that's, that's all I, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo.
This was the only application for?
Through you, Mr. President. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions 21 through 25, which are from the Department of Parks, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Director Salanti is here to address these items.
Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, item 21 is a contract for the South Mountain Recreation Complex located in West Orange. It includes maintenance, which would include lawn maintenance, mowing, garden bed maintenance, and leaf collection. Under this contract, it would also include the areas of the Treetop Adventure Course, the Educational Center, Cody Arena, Office of Emergency Management, Safari Mini Golf Course, McLean's Boathouse Restaurant, the playground, the paddleboard area, and Pictet Pavilion, and all landscaping on both sides of the Orange Reservoir, the large planters at the southern section of the reservation path. Green Valley was the lowest bidder out of six bidders. The monthly cost of this contract is $24,200. The total fixed cost of the contract is $580,800. There is a $24,000 allowance. The total price of the 20 more, 24-month contract is $604,800.
Thank you. Mr. Aniu, any questions?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions 21 through 25 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Excuse me, Mr. President. And this included the explanation for all of the resolutions 22, 23, 24, and 25?
Uh, did I miss that?
Yes. Um, correct me.
Dan, Dan.
Yes.
Dan, you, you gotta, you gotta talk fast.
Okay. Item, item number 22, this is a contract for golf course, lawnmower equipment under a state contract. Total amount is $258,509. This is the purchase of four fairway mowers to replace, to replace 10-year-old mowers that have reached their life expectancy. Item 23 is the contract award to the David Street Development Corporation for furnishing and the installation of removal of holiday lights at Turtleback Zoo. It's exercising a 24-month contract extension, opt rather not to exceed $230,000. Item 24 is a authorization to use the Open Space Trust Fund to allocate a grant to the township of West Orange for purchasing of property for an amount of $750,000. This item was discussed at the Open Space Advisory Board and was recommended to move forward on this request for funding to preserve 94 acres of land, which is adjacent to the Crestmont Country Club. This is a portion of the total cost to secure this property. Item 25 is approval for a community-based deer management plan permit application. This application has to be submitted to the State of DEP if we are to move forward with a deer management program. A little history, last year, we did not have a deer management program. Mr. Dan Benier is our, our deer consultant and has been for the last several years here in the county. I also believe Mr. Benier is also on the call as well.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Aniu, any questions?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
I, I do want number 24. Dan, this, it's not really a question, I guess, but this is, this total acquisition was what, over $5 million, 5.1 for West Orange?
Correct. 5.5.
And 96 acres?
Total acquisition would be 94.55 acres.
How is that, how would, I mean, is that-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's a total, the total acreage is 241 acres.
200 acres?
241, Crestmont, consists of 241 acres.
For 5.5 million dollars?
Mr. McInerney, the total acreage of the golf course is the 241 acres, of which 94.55 are being acquired through this process.
Right. I was just, I'm, and again, it's not really, it's just a comment, really, that that seems like a very low price for that much acreage in the town of West Orange. So it seems like a great, is this adjacent to the golf course?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Mr. President, may I join in?
Yes, if Mr. McInerney has finished asking.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
As Dan Salanti stated, this was fully addressed at the July 24 first meeting of the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board. And this land in no way does anything to harm the acres, the amount of land which is being used for the golf course. The golf course is not going to change at all. Originally, a real estate firm wanted to acquire the land to build homes, which West Orange did not want. So West Orange negotiated to save the land from development and keep it for open space. So this acreage is totally unused now. We're not taking anything away from the golf course. The golf course is not changing at all. This acreage right now is just parkland. It's going to be used for that purposes. It's not going to be built on. It's going to just be an open space acquisition for West Orange, which we are helping for them to acquire. And if, if you could see all the, the outlines, the diagrams, you would see that this is a wonderful addition, West Orange, to acquire all this land, which is not being used for anything, and to prevent it from being built on. So we were all in favor, and we thought it was a great idea.
Okay, yes. I'm assuming that there would, there'd be a deed restriction on it as, as well, so that in the future, it couldn't be sold for purposes of development?
It says, "West Orange negotiated to acquire the land to save it from development and preserve it as open space."
All right. So, so my question is, is did the county make a condition of the 750,000 that there be a deed restriction on the deed for the property that it could never be used for anything but parkland for passive use?
Good evening, Commissioners. Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. So we are in the process of finally, finalizing that agreement with the township of West Orange, and that will be one of the conditions that, that's in that agreement, that's placed on this, this transfer of the funds, the $750,000.
The whole 95 acres could never be sold, would have a deed restriction on it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a wonderful acquisition for West Orange.
It sounds that way. It does.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions 21 through 25 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes, to all of them.
Commissioner President, Commissioner President, this is Commissioner Luciano. I'm sorry to stop, I'm sorry to stop the roll call vote. We're also voting on number 25. Is that correct?
That is correct. Do you want to separate that one out from the others?
I would like to separate that one out, because I do have some comments, and I think some of the other commissioners may as well. Can we just pull that and do 21 through 24 and take 25 separately?
We can do that. There's no reason why we can't.
Thank you.
So this is for 21 through 24, Commissioner Sebo and Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Now, this is resolution number 25. Commissioner Luciano, you have some comments or concerns or something you'd like to say on this resolution?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. I just wanted to report back that I had a deer committee management meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I want to thank some of our colleagues that were on that meeting, along with the Parks Department and the administration, as well as some of the members of the public that participated. Before we vote on this, I just wanted to say a few comments and talk with you about my feelings about this permit application for deer management. I've been on the board about 10 years, and obviously, this is something that, since I began on this board, we have voted on. I think the only year that we did not have the deer hunt was last year due to some COVID restrictions and, you know, some other government issues that we just didn't want to move forward with at the time. This year, I know that we're bringing this back on the agenda and just kind of a little- and just kind of a little bit of a report to our deer committee meeting. It was brought to my attention by some of the concerned residents, including Ms. Susan Aptman, who spoke at the beginning of the meeting. So in fairness, I wanted to put out there, you know, some of her comments as well through me, is that, you know, her concern is, we've been doing this now for over a decade and, you know, we still are faced with the same ongoing issue. And that is, we have just way too many deer in our reservations and they are causing havoc on a lot of different levels. But it seems like this, this deer hunt, as you, as it's been called, um, you know, does bring some unrest amongst the community and why we, as government officials, are involved in hunting animals in our reservations. Being the reservation is for animals, you know? We don't really want them in our backyards and we have developed much of Essex County and that continues to happen in many of our areas, especially in western and northern Essex. And the deer have been, uh, a bit of a problem and a bit of a nuisance. That being said, I can tell you that my feelings towards this deer hunt for several years is, uh, in support. I've supported it because I don't see any alternative methods and I don't have another option at this time to rid us of the motor vehicle accidents, you know, the nuisance of eating the undercarriage of the reservation, you know, the problem we've also had with Lyme disease and ticks. So I voted for the hunt, um, as it's called, or the deer management program. But deep down inside, you know, I've had a lot of feelings over the years that I just don't like it. I don't like the fact that we're involved in it. I don't like the fact that our county government spends money to hunt animals. I actually wish that we could, uh, either pass this off to the local municipalities or not even really participate in it. However, that being said, at the time, um, you know, of our committee meeting, I know that Ms. Aptin, Aptman wanted her, uh, friend, who is a doctor, involved in, um, in, in, um, I, I don't want to say a doctor, he's more of like a, a biologist, um, who's involved in other alternative deer management, um, systems and programs. But at the time now, we don't know much about that. Uh, and I am open ears and open discussion to it. As I had also told Ms. Aptman, she should reach out to the administration and try to sit down with the Parks Department, with the county executive. I know there's other commissioners that are on this board that would also participate in the meeting to talk about, to discuss and hear other alternative means. You know, whether that's inoculation and trying to just, um, you know, rid us of the problem of deer multiplying, not by killing them, but by actually making them infertile. And I do know that that is a possibility. Is it feasible? I don't know if it's affordable, so that really isn't an option right now. So before we vote on this application approval, I just wanted to kind of clear the air and get everything out there. And I wanted to let you know, Mr. President, that as the deer man, as the deer committee president, uh, chair, I have felt over the years that this is definitely something I'd like to address. I'd like to discuss alternative, you know, means and I would love if we got away from this. But at the time that we sit here now at this meeting right now, I don't see us having any alternative. I do know that we didn't have the hunt last year and we have a major ongoing problem. So as it stands this year, I definitely am in support of this permit application and moving forward. Again, this permit application doesn't actually authorize the hunt. It just authorizes the county to apply for a permit from the state. So there's still enough time for Ms. Aptman to get some more concrete evidence together and more of a formal proposal for the administration and for the commissioners, which we don't really have in front of us. But that being said, I just wanted to share and open the floor to our other commissioners because I'm also one of nine. You know, if there's eight others or five or six others of you that don't like this application and you want to postpone it, I wouldn't object to that. However, I am going to say that I'm voting in the affirmative and I am for the application. I'm not going to hold it up because I do know we have a deer management problem. And until we have something else or another option, we have to move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Luciano, appreciate that, um, heartfelt, passionate, uh, plea there. Commissioners, any, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just wanted to, um, uh, first of all, thank Commissioner Luciano for those comments and also, uh, for his leadership, uh, on that committee. Um, having chaired that committee, I know that is not an easy committee to, uh, to be the leader on and, uh, wanted to thank him for holding that hearing and, and, uh, exploring new, uh, possibilities. But did want to put on the record that, um, you know, I, I will not be supporting, uh, resolution number twenty-five. I, I do think we have come to a time, uh, as a county, that, uh, it is time to explore, um, different, uh, methods, uh, to deal, uh, to deal with this issue. Um, and, and I have been compelled by the science and the evidence that's been presented that there are better ways to do this and better ways for the county, uh, to spend our money to do it and, and we'll be voting no on, uh, on number twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Uh, before we take a vote, Commissioner Cooper, you have a comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I too want to, um, commend Commissioner Luciano for, for speaking up and communicating the sentiments and outcomes from his committee meeting. This is an interesting issue that I don't know a whole lot about. Um, I'm open to hearing other alternatives that the committee or your constituents have or how we could deal with, with this issue. It is an issue that we need to deal with, but I just don't know the alternative. So right now, I will be supporting resolution number twenty-five. I'm all for going forward with the permit, but please, uh, Commissioner, share with us the alternative methods that we should explore for dealing with this growing problem that we have in, in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. And I, I too want to chime in here and, and what I'd like to see, uh, based on, uh, Commissioner Luciano's, um, information that he just shared with us, I concur, there is a problem, but right now, we don't have a solution tonight. We don't have an alternative solution in place. So what I'd like the administration to do, but wait before, let me, let me back up. So we have the deer calling expert who represents the county and advises the county on the line?
Yes, we do, Mr. President, Mr. Bernier.
Let's get him on the line and then, Commissioners, you can ask him some questions. Let's get him on the line, introduce yourself, sir.
Yeah, Daniel Bernier, Wildlife Management Consultant.
Okay, uh, there are some concerns here, uh, about this, uh, deer calling and, uh, we're looking for alternatives. Uh, and there have been some committee meetings run by, uh, the, uh, deer, uh, committee chairman, uh, Lynn Luciano. And it has been some information that have come to us in terms of alternatives. And, uh, so we'd like to hear from you as the advisor to the county. Uh, are you familiar with any of these alternatives? Uh, viable? You agree with any of them or any other ways to, um, control the deer population?
Yeah, yes, I, I participated in Commissioner Luciano's, uh, deer management committee meeting and was aware even before that of, uh, Ms. Apt, Ms. Aptman's offer to present alternative solutions, but as far as I know to date, none of those solutions have been identified. Uh, Dr. Schmid from Yale, I've never heard of before. Uh, I'm, I'm interested in finding out what alternatives he may have to present, but this is a, a field I've been involved in for over twenty-five years and, um, I take part in national conferences with wildlife biologists and forest ecologists. And, um, the, the type of program that Essex County runs, uh, is clearly stated as the most effective way for dealing with the problem at this time. Um, immun contraception, which is a, the, for type of fertility control that is most often, uh, talked about, is not practical or feasible for application in any of the Essex County parks because of the topography, because of the cost, because of, uh, the, the, the methods that are needed, uh, in order to allow it. Contrary to what some of the callers earlier tonight said, New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife will give a, a permit for the use of immun contraception, but under very specific, uh, conditions. And, um, they, in the discussions I've had with Fish and Wildlife staff, that I don't think they have any, uh, confidence in that, that type of program, uh, yielding any true results in New Jersey. It had been attempted many years back in Morris County and, um, with a very small number of deer and the results were, were, um, not positive. A- as the, uh, research into immun contraception goes forward, one of the leading researchers is at Rutgers and e- even just recently, I heard him speak and he is still saying that in, in his opinion, hunting is a much more effective option than any type of fertility control. It, it's just not.
Can you provide us with his name and get his contact information? We'd love to, um, I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Luciano and would love to have a conversation with him. Uh, maybe we could have another meeting and get the administration there and you can, you can be there as well and we'll have, um, we'll have everybody there and let's, let's, let's discuss this and see if there is a viable alternative, at least for next time. Uh, it's once a year, so let's, let's get everybody together, have a, 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 a discussion and see if we can, uh, come up with, uh, other alternative o- options here.
I would be very happy to participate in that.
Sure. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I just want to just, for the record, uh, I, I too am not, um, very familiar with, uh, with our deer issue, but I can tell you that, um, in the last twelve months, I've seen more deer in Branchburg Park here in Newark than I've seen, um, ever. So I, I can, um, uh, understand, um, uh, the, uh, the concern of, 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 of the deer population, um, really getting, um, into the community. It's reaching, it's, I mean, it is coming into Branchburg Park here in Newark. I can imagine about its surrounding areas, um, there. Um, I'm going to support this, uh, application. Um, I am also interested to know, uh, if we can find more alternative and, and humane, um, uh, alternatives to, to deer management. I, I, I would love to see what those alternatives are. But for, uh, the purpose of today, um, I, I'm not going to stand in the way. I'm going to move the application forward and, and hopefully in the next, um, uh, month or so, that we can hear from some other folks, some other experts that can, uh, uh, teach us and, and share with us the alternative ways. Uh, the end result that we want is, is, is to manage the deer and, and, and we need to do so quickly and effectively. And, uh, right now, um, time is of essence because it's, it's getting to be, um, uh, of real concern. So, uh, for the record, um, I, I will be supporting, um, this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. I mean, there's another alternative, you know, we can stop building on their habitat.
Mr. President, if I could add to it.
Commissioner Seville?
Thank you. Uh, South Mountain Reservation is so overrun by deer. I live in Livingston and if I drive on the main street, on Livingston Avenue, I'll come across deer walking right on the street. They're all over the place up here and the people are complaining bitterly because the deer are eating their landscaping. They are all over the place here in town. And I know that it's very, very difficult to control the deer population. I've been taken through the reservations and I've seen what the deer have done to the reservations in terms of what they've been eating to destroy the reservations. I've been on Fire Island and on Fire Island, they have a procedure, because it's an island, they have a procedure where they can, uh, take care of fertilizing, uh, the deer so the deer can reproduce. And it's working very well on Fire Island, but we don't have an area where they can control the deer as they can on Fire Island. And I've been looking at this for many, many years and I think that what we're doing is the appropriate action that we can take. And I think that, uh, Mr. Benyard is very, very, uh, knowledgeable and efficient at what he knows. He's done a lot of studying, he's been working with us for years and I admire his, uh, expertise in what he is doing. So unfortunately, we have a problem with the deer and there's not much we can do about it, except what we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seville. Do we have a problem with the deer or does the deer have a problem with us?
Commissioner President, I, I just have one more comment, Commissioner President. Um, I just want to put on the record that I too, over the years, know Dan Bernier and I want to thank him for his services. I've also been on site and I've watched his operation. Um, and it's, it's something that's not in question. You know, Mr. Bernier is a true professional and he runs a very good operation in deer management. And again, that's why I'm here to support this application tonight. But to Freeholder Sevold and to, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Sevold, Commissioner Mercado and to the rest of the commissioners on this board, to your point, to your point that we see more deer now than ever, raises my question originally when I say, we've been spending this money and we've been having this, this hunt now for twelve out of the last thirteen years. And have we made any headway or are we just wasting our time? Because there's more deer now than ever. So I just don't see it being a viable solution to just have this hunt every year. And if that is something we're going to do, then I'm going to argue a little bit differently. I'm going to argue then that we need to have this hunt longer and we need to keep it going until the deer population is where it needs to be. Because by doing this every year, it just seems to be very upsetting to the community and we seem to be going nowhere. You know, there needs to be a long-range plan here and a short-range plan. And, you know, now there's deer in Newark and there's more deer than ever right now in West Orange, like Commissioner Sevold said, then what exactly have we been doing all these years since I've been a commissioner? So that's just some school for thought and I have nothing more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. President, if I could just add, it's worse now because nothing was done last year because of the pandemic. So that's part of the problem. And we only do this a certain time of the year and we can't extend the period of time because of the advice of Mr. Benyard in terms of what we can do. It's limited to a certain period of time, uh, for specific reasons. We just can't continue to do it. And it is out of hand because it hasn't been done now in a couple of years. It was under control until last year when it started getting worse. This year, it's worse than I've seen it in a very long time. Thank you.
So Commissioner Seville, I hear you, but I, I, I beg to differ. I've seen more deer the last four or five years. Uh, and I even talked about how many deer I've seen, and this is before the pandemic, right, in, in Branchburg Park. And I grew up in the North Ward, that's where I grew up playing, in, in Branchburg Park. And I have seen more deer, you know, to, uh, Commissioner Luciano's point, you know, what are we doing? Okay, so one year we missed, but I, I've seen those numbers before the pandemic.
Commissioner President?
Yes.
This is Daniel Benier. Uh, if I could add, uh, at, at Commissioner Luciano's request during his recent hearing, uh, he asked that we look back at where we started and where we are now. And I did go back and prepare those numbers. You are all correct in that there are, there are a lot more deer in a lot more places than there ever were. But in South Mountain Reservation, our numbers show that when we started our program there in two thousand and eight, the population density was about two hundred and forty per square mile and it is now down around twenty, uh, well, the, the density going into this coming winter is predicted to be about twenty-five per square mile. At Hilltop, when hunting began in two thousand and ten, the density was about two hundred and twenty-seven per square mile. That number has gone down way de, uh, way down as well, though, not, uh, nearly enough. That number has gone down way down as well, though, not nearly enough as compared to South Mountain. Currently, the density going into this winter is going to be about 108 per square mile versus 227. So we've made significant headway in the areas where we've conducted a program, but in areas that have not been part of the deer management program, where hunting has not occurred, yes, certainly those numbers are increasing and will continue to increase.
So what is the optimal number to get down to? When, what number, what level would you consider the deer population under control?
When we began the program in 2008, the feeling at that time among forest ecologists was that the optimal number was 20 per square mile. Since then, as a result of numerous studies here in New Jersey, not nationwide, but right here in New Jersey, by academics at Rutgers, and there's a specialist at Rarine Valley Community College who has studied hardwood forests throughout New Jersey, the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, they together have identified 10 per square mile as an optimal number to be at in order to allow forest regeneration. They're, you know, the forests, as we see them now, are not going to be able to recover on their own under the pressure that they have from the browsing of deer, until that number is reduced to about 10 per square mile. At South Mountain, we're looking at 25 in the coming winter, so two and a half times what it should be. At Hilltop, it will be 108, so 11 times as high as it should be.
And so those are the only two hunting areas?
Those are the only two areas that we are currently conducting a program in.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that information. Commissioner Gil, you had something else you'd like to add?
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, this, and it's clear that, at least from, that it looks like that, you know, this has the majority of the board's support to proceed. But if the, I was just going to say, you know, as the conversation, as the conversation in this issue continues, and can appreciate Mr. Benier's comments, but, you know, it seems to me that Dr. Schmitz is also a fairly credible, and, you know, which was sent to the entire board, a very credible voice in this space as well. So in addition to the folks at Rutgers, I'm hoping that we can also engage with him, you know, in his role, you know, in the School of Environment at Yale University, and, you know, he's, he has, again, he has, to me, laid out a very credible case that, that both, both the count itself is flawed, and the data that we're using to make this decision is flawed, and therefore our remedy is flawed. So, you know, so I would encourage that, you know, that everyone take a look and read what he sent, and that he also be, and those people who have spoken up be a part of, you know, continue to be a part of that conversation. So thank you, Mr. President.
Makes perfect sense, to me, Commissioner Gil, to have all parties, you know, no matter what side you're on, so we can have a real conversation. You can't just be one-sided and have a real conversation. So let's get everybody on a call, in a meeting, and have the discussion, and see where it leads. All right, so now, for Resolution Number 25, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado, and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Kill?
No.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmoris, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 26 through 33, which are from the Department of Public Works. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Antonio is going to address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 26 is a division of buildings and grounds contract to Guardian Fence Company to provide removal and installation of fence and gates at various Essex County locations. This is a two-year contract extension option, an amount not to exceed $166,850. It is open-ended. It includes, in the scope of work, the removal of existing fence and gates, and installation of new fence and gates of various heights. We have already identified preliminary locations for work at 321, 320 University Avenue, the Holoway Records complex, and a certain bridges. Item Number 27 is a buildings and grounds contract award to Tyson Krupp Elevator Corporation to provide elevator maintenance at the new Doctor Martin Luther King Jr. Justice Building and the new employee parking deck of the Holoway Records complex. This is a five-year contract, an amount not to exceed $391,152. It is open-ended, and Tyson Krupp was the lowest responsive bidder of the four respondents to this bid. This will allow the county to properly maintain and service the new seven elevators located at both the MLK Justice Center Building and the new parking deck. Item Number 28 is a contract award to Air Systems Maintenance Incorporated, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide general mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and HVAC services throughout the county. They are the lowest responsible bidder of three respondents. This will be a two-year agreement, an amount not to exceed $863,250. This will be funded by Public Works Capital Improvement Funds. It is open-ended, and right off the bat, we have identified improvements to the mechanical floor, located in the fourth floor of the Veterans Courthouse, as well as other HVAC improvements at the youth house in Durya Street. Item Number 29 is a Public Works Division of Engineering contract to Colonelli Brothers to provide miscellaneous drainage improvements at various county locations. This will be a one-year contract, not to exceed $678,802. It will be funded with capital monies, and Colonelli was the lowest responsive bidder of the four respondents. Nick Colonelli is on the phone with us to talk about his company, and perhaps answer some questions the board may have. Nick?
Hi, good evening. How are you guys doing? Mino with Colonelli Brothers here, Vice President of the company here. We've been doing various types of work, such as this, for many, we're going on our 36th year in business, and we have held several contracts like this within Essex County and within several other municipalities in the area. We appreciate the working relationship, and we're here to help out however we can.
Mr. Anyu, any questions? No, Mr. President. Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have a question for item Number 30.
Commissioner Cooper?
Haven't gotten there yet.
Haven't gotten it yet? Okay, I'll hold it.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item-
Hold on, hold on. The Colonellis Brothers, you guys are a union shop?
Yes.
So what union are you affiliated with?
Yeah, sure, for laborers in the areas, Local 472. Operator Engineers is Local 825. Those are the two main unions we use for this type of work.
Thank you very much. I already knew that, I just wanted to hear you say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 30 is providing design and engineering services for a traffic signal intelligent transportation system along Central Avenue. The county of Essex received a grant from the federal government to undertake ITS and traffic signal adaptive improvements along Central Avenue. However, we need to design and engineer said improvements. So we advertised for such services. The highest rated and lowest cost was submitted by Michael Baker Engineering. On the phone with us is David Leepold, the Vice President, who may answer any questions the board may have, and to his company. David?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Baker International is a full-service planning and engineering firm with more than 3,500 employees. Our local office in Newark, New Jersey, has more than 35 years of infrastructure design experience. We've put together a highly qualified team with diverse and comprehensive skills to carry out this project for the county. Our team is intimately familiar with the entire design, construction spectrum for advanced traffic signal systems, and we're happy at the opportunity to work for the county. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Anyu?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. For Resolution Number 30, what portion of Central Avenue will this grant address? Is it all of Central Avenue, or just a portion?
It's, I believe, 37 signals along Central Avenue. The project limits, it's 34 signals, I apologize. It's through the city of Newark, Orange, East Orange, and West Orange. And it's a total of four miles.
I'm sorry, are you just changing out traffic signals, or are you redesigning, like, the layout of the traffic signal?
The layout will be the same, but we'll be upgrading equipment, such as the vehicle detection, and we'll be adding communications for the traffic signals, as well as new traffic controllers and technology to improve the traffic flow.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? I have one. You say you have, your Newark firm put together a very diverse workforce to address these issues, who are very familiar with traffic and signals. How many Essex County residents will be working on this particular job that you employ?
I believe, yeah, I believe we have 12 Essex County residents that are working local for our firm, and I believe at least three or four of them are going to be engineers that are working on this project.
Thank you very much.
Off the top of my head.
Thank you. Next.
Item, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 31 is a contract award to Ariel Rice to provide parts and repairs for specialized equipment. This will be a contract in an amount not to exceed $75,000. It is a non-fair and open contract, will last 24 months. This will provide for the maintenance and inspections as required by OSHA of various Department of Public Works work vehicles, which have hydraulic booms, either in the form of knuckle booms, or cherry pickers, or bucket trucks. Item Number 32 is a contract change order with Torco Golf Incorporated for the Hendrix Field Golf Course Improvement. This will add an amount not to exceed of $589,999.10 to the current contract, which is equivalent to just over an 11% change order. This will continue to be funded with grant monies. Item Number 33, the Department of Public Works requests approval of an emergency declaration payment to Surf Pro due to building damages repairs. This will be in an amount of $56,331.16. The emergency occurred on June 23 of 2021, due to water damage caused by a broken pipe on the ninth floor of the Lurysmith Public Safety Building. The damage occurred on the eighth floor, which houses offices of the appellate court judges. This is a non-fair and open contract. And that is, we'll answer any questions the board may have at this point.
Mr. Anyu, any questions?
Through you, Mr. President, this is a point of inquiry. Is the hydraulic boom, is that, is that the reason that makes the equipment on the first item specialized for purpose of contracting?
Through you, Mr. President. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. That is correct. Hydraulic booms are for work purposes, like here at Public Works, and not just heavily regulated by OSHA. They're extremely specific as far as the maintenance and the requirements of upkeep, and it is extremely specialized, and very few firms in New Jersey provide this service.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing not. I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano, a second from Commissioner Mercado, to take Resolutions 26 through 33 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gil?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmoris, absent, Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 34 through 36, which are from the Office of the Prosecutor. We will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Item 34 is a resolution to approve participation in the program that we, one of the budget assertions that we did earlier, Operation Helping Hands. Actually, Item Number 40, we talked about earlier, the state requires us to have a participation resolution, and that's what this is. Item 35, the same with the Office of Attorney General. This is a sub-award for the period October 21 through, 2021 to September 2022. Again, this is a required participation resolution for the sexual assault response team. Item 6, 36, excuse me, from the Office of the Prosecutor. This is a contract award to Integrity House to provide certified peer recovery services for the Operation Helping Hand program. 12-month contract agreement, an amount not to exceed $50,000. This is for low-level offenses, which is not similar to the drug court, which deals with indictable offenses, but to help people who have addiction issues or drug issues just to avoid being in jail, and this provides the counseling that's needed. Item Number 37 is with the Office of the Sheriff. It's a contract award to U.S. Corrections to provide for extradition services. It's a 24-month, 24-month contract extension, an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. President. Did you just request Resolutions 34 through 36, or are you including Resolution 37?
34 through 36, unless you know something, I don't know.
My apologies, President, I did 37. My apologies, Mr. President. I did Thirty-seven as well. My apologies.
You're in a hurry, huh? Thirty-four through Thirty-six. We're gonna get there. Thirty, Thirty-seven is next. Mr. Anian Wu?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebel and a second from Commissioner Cooper to take Resolutions Thirty-four through Thirty-six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number Thirty-seven, which we'll read into the record at a later time from the Office of the Sheriff. Mr. Jackson, here you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. A highly anticipated Item Number Thirty-seven. This is a contract award to U.S. Corrections to provide for extradition services. It's a twenty-four-month contract extension in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Anian Wu, questions or comments?
No question, only that I liked it the second time, Mr. Jackson read it.
Mr. McInerney?
Practice makes perfect.
Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Thirty-eight, which is from the Department of Corrections. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, the record teams will handle this item.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening, Commissioners. Through you, Mr. President. Resolution Number Thirty-eight is authorization for the county of Essex to join with the county of Union in applying for a LEAP implementation grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support implementation of shared services. As you well know, Union County and Essex are now in partnership where we manage their inmates and the custodial services, and we are eligible for this particular grant as a merged government entity. LEAP stands for Local Efficiency Achievement Program. I advocate for this passage of this grant request so we can purchase equipment, supplies, vehicles, computers, et cetera. I'll be happy to answer any questions that may arise.
Mr. Anian Wu?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney? You're muted, sir.
I'm sorry. No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Jackson and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Let's move to Resolutions Thirty-nine through Forty-two, which are from the Office of Purchasing. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Deputy Administrator Coltrier will handle these items.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Thirty-nine is a renewal of our co-op agreement between the Morris County Co-op and Essex County. Cost is eleven hundred dollars per year. Other counties that participate are Passaic, Somerset, Morris, Warren, and other various counties throughout the state. It allows us to purchase items that are needed for various departments such as paving materials and other goods, including sporting goods, et cetera. This allows us to go out instead of going out for bid, using the bid process that the co-op allows. Number forty is an award to Maybelline Crest Ford for one new twenty-one or newer Ford Explorer. It also at the cost of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Also, this voluntary co-op can be used for other departments or other municipalities within Essex County. Number forty-one is the permission to use competitive contract process in order to solicit proposals for various spec writing edits of articles, magazines, brochures, and any other cultural activities that we may need, that we may need a spec writer or a grant writer. Twenty-two. This is for Lexus Nexus. It is a non-fair and open library and educational materials that county council uses along with the prosecutor. And during the course of the year, for a two-year period, it's not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand. We expended sixty-seven thousand in the last contract.
Thank you, Mr. Coltrier. Mr. Anian Wu, any questions or comments?
None, none, Mr. President.
McInerney?
Questions? No questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Sebel to take Thirty-nine through Forty-two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Forty-three through Fifty-seven, which are all commendations and memorials and proclamation resolutions. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. President, can we do Resolution Number Fifty-five if we can by acclamation? I would love to be included on Breastfeeding Awareness Month.
Sure, I agree. Any opposition? I don't see none, so let's do it via acclamation. Duly noted.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Sebel?
I would like to be included on the Commendation Forty-five.
Anybody else? Anything else? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Graham to take Forty-three through Fifty-seven as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional added starters?
No additional added starters, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees?
Mr. President?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes, Mr. President. I, as the Chair of the ICE Committee, have been participating in the administration's ICE stakeholder meetings for the last two years. I participated on Friday at its last ICE stakeholder meeting that it held on August twenty-ninth. And the administration went through and discussed all the progress that it's made in the work and the partnerships, especially with Senior Hall, Rutgers Law and Legal Services of New Jersey. As you are aware, we, the administration proposed and we approved for these three entities to continue their work until they expend the funding that we provided for them. And I can report that as of today, there are thirteen detainees there. And the date that they're all to be out is August twenty-third, and they're moving quickly. They just, over the last week, transferred twenty-six detainees, so they're at thirteen. And we anticipate and they expect to comply with transferring all of the detainees from our facility by the agreed-upon date of August twenty-third. So I just wanted to put on the record, these stakeholder meetings were run by the Chief of Staff Phil Olajia. I want to thank him for his leadership on this. Want to thank all the stakeholders that were around the table. It was a very effective and progressive way to engage our partners on the issue related to the detainees, and it was a very important issue to especially our constituents. And I want to especially thank the administration and all the essential staff at the jail and that provide the necessary services, the medical, doctor, Anna said, and his staff, the social work staff, all the, everyone who played a role in providing the care at the hospital for the detainees. So I just wanted to report that out today. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado, for your leadership and your due diligence, being a part of that and reporting back as the Chair of that committee to, you know, this board in terms of what's going on and how they're winding down and they're gonna meet the deadline and the things that go on. So thank you as well, sir.
And I also just want to note that joining me in all those meetings was my partner Commissioner Sebel, who has been an active player in those stakeholder meetings, as she has done in many other committee meetings. So I want to thank Commissioner Sebel for her participation and her leadership in those meetings as well.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, and thank you, Commissioner Sebel, for your participation as well.
Thank you very much for the acknowledgement. Commissioner Mercado did a wonderful job.
Absolutely. Any other committee reports? So just want to report on a couple of things. We, the Recreation Oversight Committee met yesterday, and Commissioner Sebel and Commissioner Mercado were a part of that. This is, Mr. Johnson is the Chair, but he had a conflict, so he couldn't chair the meeting. We were happy to sit in for him, and we had a lively discussion with the community, some community stakeholders and the administration. Thank you for your participation in getting everybody to the table who needed to be there. And, you know, discussion was around Weekway Park and Dividend Hill, and, you know, that historical structure being renovated and those things. So there was some concerns and some participation items that the community was interested in and some communications that they'd like to see done a little better. But all in all, it was a good meeting. There was a lot of pertinent information. People got to understand where everyone is. You know, we talked about how much money was, has been expended in that park in its revitalization, you know, with all the fields and everything that's going on, the new the new structure that is being built is almost complete. You know, spent over the last several years over thirty million dollars. And this Dividend Hill seems like the last big piece of the puzzle. So, and so we're looking to do that as well and make the park whole. So I was happy to sit in for you, Commissioner Johnson, and thanks again to Commissioner Sebel and Commissioner Mercado, to the administration, Mr. Jackson, the Director Salvante, and everyone else who participated. Thank you for that.
And, Mr. President, if I may add, I want to thank you for your leadership in that meeting. And we had a very robust conversation with many players. And the end result is that we are committed to this project, to this restoration project. It's gonna take a time. It's gonna take money, but it's gonna take collaboration. And I think there are folks around on that call that are going to be talking to each other a lot more. I want to thank the administration, Dan and his staff. He had the engineers there to marshal. I definitely really want to thank Doug Freeman, who's been an instrumental player and partner with the county in all that goes on over at Weekway Park. So again, thank you for your leadership in that meeting. And I think we are on our way to making that project completed through fruition. So, but it's very early, and I think folks need to work together, be patient, and continue to take care of Weekway Park. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. So last but not least, you know, I had the opportunity to attend from Essex County, as well as Commissioner Graham, Antoinette Richardson from my staff. We had the 2021 National Association of Counties Annual Conference, which was held at the Gaylord National Hotel and Convention Center at the National Harbor in Maryland from July ninth through the twelfth. We attended numerous meetings and meetups, including the following workshops. Enhancing Local Workforce Development and Building for the Future, Immigration Reform Task Force Meeting, National Association of Black County Officials, National Organization of Black County, which is NABCO and NABCO. Current County Outdoor Recreation Challenges and Responses. Current County Outdoor Recreation Challenges and Responses Workshop, Veterans and Military Service Committee Meeting, National Organization of Black County Officials Meeting, The Future of County Libraries Meetup, Counties for Kids Strategies for Supporting Young Children and Families Workshop, Arts and Culture Commission Workshop, Maximizing Impact Through Collaborative Community Engagement, just to name a few. We also attended the NABCO/NABCO Reception, and I represented Essex County as our voting delegate. I participated in the election where Mary Jo Bonaco was elected NABCO's Second Vice President. I also took the opportunity to join NABCO, the National Association of Black County Officials. It is an individual membership. I encourage others who are interested to join also. Overall, the conference enabled attendees to gain valuable other information about the work of counties across the country that are dealing with the same problems as us in one way or another. I hope that next year we are able to increase the delegation from Essex County. You know, they talked about how New Jersey has been lacking on the national scene for quite some time, so it's time for us to get more involved. So please, please join, get involved. And again, thank Commissioner Graham, who also attended. You know, there were some very, very prominent people there. The Vice President, Kamala Harris, did the opening ceremony. Nancy Pelosi attended. There were several federal judges who were there. And we had an opportunity to meet Ben Crump. For those of you who don't know who Benjamin Crump is, he was the attorney for Breonna Taylor, for George Floyd, and countless others. He was there. There was just Pete Buttigieg, the Transportation Secretary was there. There were just countless people, and it just lets you know just how important the counties are to the federal government. They're watching. They're participating. So I urge each and every one of you, you know, to get involved a little more. So thank you, and that's my report. Are there any legislative reports? Any written communication? Any unfinished business? Any new business? All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk?
If you are calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. That's 855-756-7520. Use the password 74777. That's 74777. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting. You'll be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received or public comment will be read after calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. And this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Chala Malumbo, our Public Information Officer, we can begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chala Malumbo, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Commissioners. We do have a caller waiting to speak. The caller's name is Robert Crook. Mr. Crook, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record before speaking. You may begin.
Robert Crook. Glenfield Park is one of the many Essex County parks designed by the Olmsted Brothers at the turn of the last century. The park covers 20 acres in Montclair and Glen Ridge. The Glen area contains both natural wildlife preserves and the Tony's Brook, attributable to the Passaic watershed within its boundaries, and is in desperate need of help. The Glenfield Park Conservancy, GPC, is dedicated to the safety, maintenance, restoration, and enhancement of Glenfield Park for all the citizens of Essex County. The Glen area of the park has been neglected for decades and is not safe as streetlights are inoperable, pathways and stairways in the Glen are dangerous, and arched concrete bridges are disintegrating in place. Access to New Jersey Transit train tracks is adjacent to the Glen, and children play on the train tracks. The Glen is overgrown with Japanese knotweed, a very aggressive invasive plant that has taken over more than an acre of the Glen. Since its founding in January 2021, the Glenfield Park Conservancy has asked Essex County officials to rectify the situation. GPC has sponsored cleanups where the truckload of garbage and even handguns were removed from the Glen. Over a dozen streetlights that were inoperable for 13 years have been reported to PSENG for remediation. PSENG has requested that Essex County clear the pathways so its trucks can aim the lights. Large trees have fallen in the pathways and in Tony's Brook that have not been cleared in over two decades. Why can't park maintenance be performed? Why has this park been so neglected? We are not asking for special treatment, but need to be treated fairly, just like any other Essex County park. Just last night, on the evening of the National Night Out, my stroll through Glenfield Park observed underage children smoking marijuana and drinking alcoholic beverages on the edges of the park and within the Glen. How do I know this? Garbage left all over the path of the Glen provides evidence of this and perhaps other criminal activity.
30 seconds, Mr. Crook.
It has been proven that well-lit public spaces help to deter crime. I'm asking that Essex County Parks and Recreation do their job so that the lights can be turned back on. I'm also asking that the Board of Commissioners assist Glenfield Park by restoring the lights to the Glen, repairing and restoring the walkways in the Glen and the arched concrete bridges over Tony's Brook. Make the park a safe place by working with New Jersey Transit to install a barrier to the New Jersey Transit train tracks.
Mr. Crook, that's your time. Please finish up. Please finish.
Okay, so we're asking also help in building facilities to support the community, such as renovating and expanding the Wally Choice Center, a dog park, an outdoor venue for performers and local yoga enthusiasts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And as our practice, we will get back to you in writing. And all your concerns are duly noted, and we will make sure through Madam Clerk that they get to the proper person in the administration to address these issues. Thank you, Mr. Crook. Anyone else?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We do have other callers. The next caller is Kim Walker. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Kim Walker, and I am a resident of Essex County, very close to Glenfield Park as well. First, I just want to say thank you, Mr. President, and to the rest of the Commissioners for your leadership and your hard work, your tough decisions that you make. Definitely appreciate that overall. But I wanted to speak tonight about Glenfield Park as well, saying just our parks are and have been, especially during the pandemic, a place of refuge, of escape, and enjoyment and recreation. And I applaud the work that you've already done in Essex County parks and that you continue to do to make them accessible for all. But one of the unique and distinguishing features of Glenfield Park is the unforgotten, and that's its lower Glen. It does have stairs that descend down into walkways and bridges over Second River, the same river that flows through and around Watson Park, Wrightfield, Branch Brook Park, and into the Passaic. Members of the Glenfield Conservancy who live both in Montclair and Glen Ridge really want to organize to help clean up and do some of the things that Mr. Crook was saying to make it more enjoyable for everybody and safer for sure. But we can't get down there in the Glen. It's unsafe because it's overgrown, and the lights are out. So community members have reached out to PSENG, as he said, about the lights for many years, but they say they can't get their equipment down there to repair and replace the lighting because of the overgrowth. So the first step to any improvements and features that we would love to see in the park is really to begin to clear that area so the lights can be repaired and turned on. Turning the lights on, of course, will keep the park safer for everyone, people who want to walk there, play there, and patrol there as well. And, you know, there are a number of things, I guess, safety and security issues that we would like to see mitigated, and clearing that area, getting the lights on is really the first step. So I would love to see any effort. I heard a lot tonight throughout the meeting about different companies doing work in other parks, other contracts awarded to do clearing, and we'd love to see something like that also for Glenfield on the south end of Montclair. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you for your advocacy, and as our practice, you will be responded to in writing.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we do have two or three comments sent to us via email. The first is Mariano Verrico Sr. of Montclair, New Jersey. I apologize if I've mispronounced the name. To Essex County Commissioners, as Vice President of the Glenfield Park Conservancy, I am requesting that the lights be turned back on in the Glen. The Glen area is in severe need of help. PSENG cannot access the Glen due to the decades of neglect. Please understand that the lack of lighting in the Glen allows crime to go undeterred. More than 200 residents have signed our petition. We support safe, clean, maintained parks for all residents of Essex County. Glenfield Park sits on the border of Montclair and Glen Ridge and needs your attention, particularly the Glen area, which has not been maintained for decades and is unsafe. We are requesting that Essex County work with GPC to determine the priorities to make the Glen a safe park that can be enjoyed by all residents of Essex County. Sincerely, Mariano Verrico Sr. The next comment was submitted by Brad Lieberman of Montclair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brad Lieberman. I live at and I own 81 Mission Street in Montclair. I can say that having lights replaced and the brush removed to permit installation of new lights is an important part of the improvement to Glenfield Park. The park represents one of the best options for all of the residents in the surrounding areas to escape into nature and explore with their families and pets. Oftentimes, we are forced to use only a smaller portion of the park as paths are overgrown and essentially limits the use of these parts once the bush has become overgrown. It is a shame that a portion of the park is not available to be used due to the lack of upkeep as many neighbors do not have large outdoor spaces to enjoy and escape the summer heat. Since these path areas are not well-traveled, they have the potential to harbor individuals who are wishing to evade patrol activities of law enforcement. The nature of this portion of the park below the area of the main park makes it far easier for any potential illegal activities to flourish as it is outside the view of typical patrol activities. The above factor, coupled with the inability of residents to use the path, has caused waste and concern from lack of brush cleaning activity. The amount of effort of the brush clearing activity is far less than having to watch the park lose so many of the gains made by the county over the past five years. We are not asking for capital investment, but a relatively small investment in labor to clear these trails and allow PSENG to undertake an improvement activity that they've already committed to. I hope you see that the potential this project has to continue to improve Glenfield Park. I ask that the Board direct the Department of Parks and Recreation to clear the paths at Glenfield and make the park even a greater asset to the area that has limited green space for the residents of the surrounding areas. Thank you for your time and attention in this matter. Respectfully, Brad Lieberman. And the final email we received was from Mary Rizzo of Newark. My name is Mary Rizzo. I live in Newark, New Jersey. I want to bring to the Commissioners' attention the fact that ICE transferred 28 people out of the ECCF this past weekend. They have been transferred to Florida, we believe. To show ICE's continued cruelty, transfers said that they were without food or water for 15 hours. They were not allowed to take personal items like toiletries with them, so now they're without them. The commissary in a new location is extremely expensive, as are phone calls. I wanted to bring this to your attention so you can discuss what you can continue to do to ensure that ICE releases not transferred detainees from ECCF. Mr. President, that completes the public comments that we received via email.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just, Mr. Jackson, can you make sure that this park issue is addressed forthwith?
Yes, Mr. President, it's a complicated issue. We can have a conversation, perhaps do in the committee. It's not as cut and dry as.
Okay.
It's not.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners, any other comments you'd like to make? Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, yeah, just wanted to follow up on some of those concerns noted tonight, and I think the county administrator just addressed that, that I think there's absolutely some complexities to, you know, to this issue that I think we're all trying to work through. I will say, no matter where we do land on some of those issues, the concern regarding PSENG being able to gain access or needing access, I'm sure that the county administrator or someone on the team saw that that PSENG did respond to a email that we were all on, essentially telling us that they were not able to do some of the work that had been requested to be done, you know, due to needs that they felt we needed to meet. So I just flagged that to say, I'm sure I have full faith and confidence that the administration will take this under advisement and get us to yes, because we're not known in this county for letting bureaucratic, I'll just call it nonsense about who's supposed to do what, get in the way of getting our main objectives done. So appreciate whatever follow-up's going to come, and would also just say to those who reached out tonight, to others that, you know, there are many people who are concerned and working on this issue as we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Commissioners, any other comments? Here and now. I need a motion to adjourn. Don't all speak at once.
I'll move it.
Moved by Sebo, seconded by Mercado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, guys. So moved. Have a good evening. Take care. Be safe out there. This COVID thing is not done yet. It's mutating. Be careful. Have a good night. Have a good night.